Power goes out, we will stop the meeting, obviously, if there's anything else that comes up. We have Spanish translation available.
We have Alma Flores for Spanish translation today.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Alma Flores, y si necesita los servicios de un intérprete estaré sentada en la parte de atrás. Gracias.
Thank you. And we do have headsets for the hearing impaired, if anybody needs those. Announcements of closed session action, item C2, there was no action taken in closed session. And now we are moving on to item C3, public comment. We have one speaker, and that is Kate Smith.
Members of the Santa Barbara School District Board of Education. There are four items that you'll be discussing. You'll be nominating and approving a representative to the South Coast Gang Task Force Leadership Council. You'll be approving Victor Rios, sociology professor from UCSB, to study and evaluate the district's gang outreach program. You don't mention how much that will cost, please let us know if there is a cost. And on the conference agenda, you'll have a report on the Santa Barbara Continuation High School Bridge Program. And there will be an annual Latino Achievement Indicator Report. I'm a member of Roger Thompson's CAC, and I am your parent rep to the Santa Barbara Subway Community Advisory Council. And I would like to report to you that your policies, programs, and practices regarding the Gang Task Force are nothing more than institutionalized racism and child abuse. There is a Washington rally, Washington DC. It's the 55th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education, and it's May 16th. And NAACP, ACLU, Marion Wright Edelman's, and over 100 organizations are coming together to state that there is a school-to-prison pipeline, that the achievement gap is related to your practices regarding criminalizing our students and systematically and systemically denying their rights under color of law. That you are ignoring IDEA, ADA, Section 504, and FERPA. The South Coast Gang Task Force was just awarded $400,000 for OES Cal GRIP. The city council didn't know what GRIP was. Do you know what GRIP is? Because you're getting some money for it. Gang reduction intervention and prevention. You have none. I was a grant writer, and I'm telling you that the Gang Task Force proposal is unviable. There are no definition of terms, no strategy, no implementation.
Thirty seconds, Lynn.
No budget, no timeline, no evaluation techniques, no personnel. The Leadership Council called their work vector control. Do you understand what the President of the United States is going to say about that? You called our children pests, vermin, insects. Don Olson said it's just like vector control. We have to deal with the...
All right, that's time, Mrs. Deacon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your attention to this very serious problem.
And we will now move on to item D, the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody wants to pull, Mrs. Deacon?
There's a couple of language clarifications in both of D1 and D2, and I don't know if we want to wait and do that at the end.
Are there specific policies that... How many policies did you want to take a look at?
There's about five or six things. There's just grammar specifically. I mean, there are minor details like that.
I also needed to comment on one of the 5,000 series, on the asthma management piece.
Okay.
The community agency language was inadvertently either not saved or something. I talked to Barbara Keaney today, and she's going to make sure that's in there.
All right. Well, what I would like to do is to pull the specific AR and policy numbers that... I have a couple that I'd like to pull also. And then go ahead and pass the rest, so that we can just address those at the end if we are able to. So, Mrs. Deacon, what are the policy numbers that you would like to pull?
The first one is the dress code policy, which is...
Give a number.
I guess that's under AR 5131, although that's steroids. There's not a...
5131, and then just we'll call it slash the dress code policy.
Right. It's dress code, but there's no AR immediately preceding it.
Sorry, what page number are you on?
Page 11. I guess it's, it must be 5132.
Oh, it is. It's exhibit 5132. Okay, so we're pulling exhibit 5132. And?
5141.21.
Is that BP or AR?
Sorry, AR.
AR 5141, what was the rest?
.21.
.21.
AR 5141.31. Those are all I have in D1, and I have a few in D2.
Okay, give me D2 also.
AR 6151.
AR 6151?
That's it.
And Mrs. Cordero, did you have anything?
No, I had a question about one of my stories.
Okay, and what was the one that you need to pull, the asthma management one?
AR 5141.23.
AR 5141.23. I have two to pull, and they are AR 6155 in item D2, and AR 6172. So, those ARs and exhibits have been pulled. Is there a motion to...
Move to approve the remaining items in D1 and D2.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now that passes, 3-0. With Heron and Noel absent, which I will not keep repeating throughout the meeting, just so everybody knows. All right, with that, we will move on to item E1 on the conference agenda. Discussion on military uniforms at high school graduation.
We were asked to bring this to the board for your discussion. Robin Swawski will present what we have used as a policy in the past, and then open it for your review.
Okay, and as you can see from the description on the memo, it has come up recently, and we spoke about this with all of the principals. Actually, all three, four high school principals, as well as the junior high principals. We wanted to have a real group discussion on it, and talked about what the ceremony of graduation means. And as you can see from the description, that the principals decided that their group thinking, and we talked about it for a while, because we had different people with different thoughts on it, was that it is a presentation of the class as a whole, and that at that particular ceremony event, that we didn't single out people with different dress, that the traditional cap and gown was what they thought was most appropriate and had been the practice. So, but we also, you know, invite the board's discussion and thoughts on it.
Okay. Public comment on this item? Should we go ahead and take that first?
Yes. Dennis Peterson, thank you. Mr. Peterson, you'll have three minutes, which will be timing, and I'll let you know at 30 seconds when you have 30 seconds.
It won't be that long.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the board, Dr. Sarvas. I'm here to speak in favor of adopting a policy that would allow the extremely rare occasion of high school graduates to finish boot camp and graduate with their class. I can't say that I have ever in years ever heard of that happening, as a singular event that it probably is. It's been a long time since I had the privilege of wearing the uniform of my country during the Vietnam War. I remember all too terribly the fact that the individual participant and the members of the military were blamed excruciatingly for the mistakes of the administration. I was recently asked by some high school kids, "Did you think it was worth it, 55,000 people?" And I said, "No, I thought it was a complete waste." But I think what we did so much of the time during that war was to denigrate the sacrifice of the individual. I have several personal friends who were spit on in uniform. It's disgusting. I'm happy to see that it took us only about 30 years to get that squared away, so that those who are ready and able to make the sacrifice for their country are freely recognized and accepted and thanked for their service. Some say no to the cap and gown exception proposal, that we want everybody to look the same. Yet at the same time, the graduates themselves, those who distinguish themselves, where I understand, special markings on their robe or sashes for academic achievement. And I'm not diminishing academic achievement, but when you think about the sacrifices and the effort that it takes to become a graduate of any military basic class, especially the Marine Corps, certainly, that's quite an achievement in itself. And personally, I think it's something that could call for recognition. And I guarantee you, you will probably not see it in many, many years. I would also point out that the uniforms of our country, particularly the dress uniforms, have always been accepted at all occasions, for anything formal, informal. They're always perfectly acceptable. I can certainly appreciate the principals' desire to have uniformity. But by the same token, just because it's always been done that way doesn't mean that that's something that we can't certainly have a discussion about. We always have the capacity for exceptions. As I say, I think that this is a singular achievement, and certainly, I would think, rarer than the receiving of a high school diploma. I think that we can all be proud of this achievement, and I think it is something that we can certainly share with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Okay, board members? Mrs. Deacon?
I'm actually going to make a motion to allow this exception. Having said that, I want to let the staff at our schools know that this doesn't in any way diminish the value we put on the decisions that our principals and vice principals make every day, and how they have to wade through the thicket of over 10,000 board policies. But I do think that this is an exception that I certainly can live with. I don't think it'll happen very often. As you mentioned, I would like to probably entertain the notion of only making this exception for active-duty military. But I guess I think that it's not going to harm our other students, but it is conferring that honor on the students who are making this exceptional contribution to our country. So, that's kind of where I stand on this one.
And I just want to remind board members that it's a conference item, although you can always make a motion on a conference item. So, Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sort of struggling with whether or not I think that we should act on this today. Although I think that it is timely because of the proximity to graduation time. I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Deacon that this is a very rare occurrence. It is, I think it's an exception that is likely to engender a great deal of goodwill for the families and the young people who are involved, and would needlessly engender ill will for those same individuals, as well as maybe even the broader community. And I do think, I wholeheartedly agree with the principals that this is a... In normal circumstances, the graduation should be a time when the students are recognized as a class, and it should be, we should not have individual attire for individual students. And I certainly would not want to open this up to other students wanting to wear their band uniforms or their football uniform or whatever. I think whether people agree with the military action that's going on now or not, that military service is a very distinct class of participation in our society that probably warrants distinctive treatment. And so, I would be inclined, I would be willing then to second Ms. Deacon's motion.
For me, I was looking at this as I... It was really interesting, actually, when it first came to me, because I had just been reading about the case in El Paso. And so, I was really startled to have the email come, to see it come this way. And I looked at what districts did all over the country, because while in one particular district, it doesn't come up that often, it does come up every year multiple times across the country. And what you could see is, you could see it going both ways, really. And what I saw in El Paso that was really powerful, and before I took any kind of final decision on it, I would really want to hear from the San Marcos student body also, is that they had a lot of strong opinions with the student body, that this was about the class as a whole. And for one person, as much as they respected what, it was a, you know, a young man in this case, what he was doing, that they wanted this to be about the class graduation. And I think it was really important for those student voices to be heard, whatever the board had ended up deciding to do. And what the board in El Paso decided to do was the cap and gown for graduation, but military uniforms and to invite students to, that were active-duty military, to participate in the color guard and in any other ceremonies around the flag, and then change into the cap and gown for the ceremony itself. So, I thought that that was a nice compromise. And obviously, Mr. Clevenger is here, so maybe he could speak to the issues around what students are thinking at San Marcos. But I'm not really sure if this has been any sort of a student discussion. You need to come up to the microphone.
Norm Clevenger is the principal at San Marcos High School. Thank you. To begin with, we obviously have not taken any kind of a straw vote among our students. But Mr. Solis, who's back there in charge of ASB for us, it's quite a topic of discussion on campus, and there are some strong feelings about it. I've been a principal in three different school districts, and although this may be the first time this has come up for me here, it's come up for me several other times in other districts, where it just seems to come out more commonly. The issue is, for me and for our staff, what's graduation all about? And it's a celebration of students graduating from high school. There is a uniform for graduation, and it's the cap and gown. Part of the uniform is the National Honor Society, if that's something, but that's part of that uniform. It's not to single out the students who may be been accepted at the Naval Academy, Annapolis, any of the finest schools in the country, some wonderful and terrific accomplishments. It's not to single out any one individual in any way. And it's about a graduating class of about 500 students who are there celebrating the fact that they have achieved this graduation from meeting the state of California and the district requirements for graduation. And that's the focus of graduation entirely. And I would think that any exception that's made to that then begs other exceptions. And I think that's why I've always looked at it the same way, and I think most of the administrators do too. Because the focus then moves away from what's important there, those 500 kids celebrating their graduation.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Given that we are missing two board members, maybe it does make sense to hold off on this decision. And I'm happy to rescind my motion, which was kind of not completely formed anyway. But I did want to just weigh in on the notion of student input. I would be leery, I guess, of going down that path, just because different students at different schools might have different opinions, and we could end up with a kind of a checkerboard situation.
Well, I want to be clear that I didn't mean a poll. But I do want students to have the right, as we would give any member of the public, to come and speak on this, if this was something that they felt strongly about.
Certainly, it would be nice to hear from the students, and maybe there's other members of the public who would like to speak to it as well. So, I'm fine with keeping it on the...
Mrs. Cordero?
I just, and I don't mind voting on it at a later date, too. I just want to hope we don't, are not voting on it too late for it to have meaning.
No, we can make sure it's on the next agenda.
We can move it to next week's agenda.
I also, though, just want to caution us about doing anything like a poll, even a straw poll. Because I think when you ask people for their opinion in a reasonably formal way, there is, you do sort of build the expectation that you're then going to act on their advice. And I agree with Ms. Deacon that we would likely have different opinions at different schools. And I don't think it would be appropriate to have different policies for different schools. So, I don't want to give students an expectation that we don't really intend.
I just would hope that we would listen. Here's another question for you, Mrs. Swawski. Is there, looking through, I could not see, like, there's any sort of standard CSBA boilerplate on anything like ceremonial attire at graduations?
Not that we could find anywhere. We asked CSBA, certainly.
Okay.
And we kind of did a little bit of research, and it didn't seem to be that anything existed.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Solis would like to address the board.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I'm Aaron Solis, the Activities Director at San Marcos. You're asking about student opinion at San Marcos. And the ASB student government has discussed it in their meeting. And just to give you information, they were split right down the middle on how to proceed it. And I think most of the kids, in fact, all the kids saw both sides to the argument. But just to give you some more information, because I asked them, "What can we do in teaching the chain of command?" Well, you know, if you're united, then you go see, Mr. Barron's the vice principal, and then, you know, Mr. Clevenger, work your way up. But it never got out of their student body committee, because they split right down the middle of it. So, that probably doesn't help, but you're asking about student opinion.
It's interesting.
Yeah, you're asking about student opinion, and that's what it came down to.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we are on to item E2, Report on Santa Barbara Continuation High School Bridge Program.
Ms. Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, you know, all those titles, will introduce this presentation, and I believe we have Dr. Caprito here to speak to this tonight.
Yes, Dr. Caprito, principal of Santa Barbara High School, will come up and describe briefly the new program that was implemented this year. And I think, more importantly, describe the plans for next year, because this was the very first year, and it got off the ground rather late in the year, brand-new. And he'll describe exactly what the program is intended to be.
There's essentially, thank you for inviting me, and I'm, you know, this was a long time in coming.
I have to point out, Dr. Caprito, that we are starting early with your...
And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that.
Just, I know it's five minutes.
Yeah, this is about five hours early.
Five hours earlier than the last time.
The time he's usually here for this.
Thoroughly excited about that, I have to share with you. There's three parts to this that I would like to share with all of you, and anybody who's actually willing to listen at this point. There's, there was, I need to respond to a couple of things, because there was a previous meeting where I had asked Mr. Meister, actually, just to make a short presentation. And, you know, I have to apologize. I asked him to make a presentation. I didn't ask him to respond to questions. And I feel badly for him, because he wasn't given all the information. He was just doing something for me, because I was out of town at a, chairing a WASC committee, so that we just got stuck. So, that's the first part. I just need to be able to go back and respond to some of the things that I had received, information, a little bit of a video, and then ultimately, a memo that I received. Second, I'm hoping Carlos Williams gets here. I know this fire thing has sort of got everybody going in different directions. Carlos is going to come and talk a little bit about, from a counseling perspective, about the need for this particular program. And then, lastly, I want to just walk you through what, not so much the history of the program, but moving forward. And I think that would be probably as fair as anything. So, in order just to keep my thoughts, I'm going to read, if that's okay, because I think it's faster, and it keeps me on task, truly. There was an issue about Continuation High School in the beginning, and there was some board discussion about La Cuesta sites. And what I wanted to offer is that there seems to be a concern as to whether or not the continuation school located on our campus, and that was a question, is a new school. And I'm going to share, when the question moved, Santa Barbara was left with an existing continuation school number. The name disappeared. We inherited a school number, an SDC number. And so, that pretty much leaves us with three. I don't know if you're aware of it. We have, I believe, and Kathy would probably know better, we have a night school number that we don't use. We have a regular school number. Now we have a continuation high school number. So, we're pretty much 24-hour deal, if we choose to be. And in different modes, so I think you should know that. This is not, it's not new. The continuation high school is not new. It's been on that campus for years. There was a question about the newly registered number, and there was some, actually, you received some data. It says, matching some screenshots, you received copies of this. While the school operates on the Santa Barbara High School campus, does not appear to have its own dedicated facilities. And I'll share a couple of points there, but it says, "It is literally a new school within a school." As you know, La Cuesta, the continuation school that used to be at the school is now operating at the Ortega Street. And this is where I'm unclear. I am truly unclear about a comment that surfaced regarding Santa Barbara Continuation High School being newly registered. I received the data sheet, but I didn't see a date when it was registered. So, I don't know how people got that information, and I'm a little concerned about that, because it's not new. I think Kathy, if I could defer, it was like 1983 or something? Yeah, 1983. But you wouldn't see that on the data sheet. I have the data sheet. It doesn't show. It doesn't identify when the school was there. So, that comment caught me off guard, because while it was stated, there isn't any evidence to support one way or the other when it happened. So, I think that what happened is when the La Cuesta school left Santa Barbara campus, there was a name change. That's really what happened. The name changed from La Cuesta to Santa Barbara Continuation High School. And the school was chartered in, oh, 1980, and it was chartered as a 912. So, there is another question as to whether we can operate as a 912 or 1112 operation. It was chartered as a 912, so we're perfectly within, it's reasonable that we would operate a 912. There actually is no reason to change it, and in fact, the thrust of our focus is on ninth graders who enter the school who aren't prepared for high school. That's really the impetus that we're going to target. The next area had to do with school, the school is a continuation school in name only. It teaches the same number of hours, the same curriculum as the other high school. It enrolls only ninth graders, it was reported, most of whom are too young for a continuation school. I think I just cleared that up. It's a 912 school. It was chartered as such.
Uh, Dr. Capito, can I just chime in there?
Yeah.
And maybe as we have questions as we go along, we'll just pause him for a moment. When you say it's a 912, the continuation schools are actually meant to serve 16 and up?
There's versions. You have community day schools, you have continuation high schools. Okay, most continuation high schools are operated within school districts. Most community day schools are operated by county. Okay, that's the one difference. County schools, community day schools are court-community type schools. The continuation high school could open as a 912 or open as an 1112, depends on the original charter. And now, I would defer to Kathy, because I don't know, but whoever did this originally was, did a good job. Because when you open as 1112, and you try to go backwards, nearly impossible. When you open as 912 and it's there, you got to bargain, because you can use it in multiple ways.
Hey, just for clarification, this is the Los Alturas number, not the La Cuesta number.
Okay, so it's the Los Alturas number, and so, it can serve 9th through 12th grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, and I think those things need to be cleared up, because it's, again, it was, I received the same memo. The, it goes on to say that, "It is not entirely clear, but the school's only science may be, or only courses may be language, arts, math, and possibly history. Santa Barbara Continuation High School students take science electives PE from Santa Barbara High curriculum offerings." And then it talks about athletics, participate on Santa Barbara High School teams. Now, my response is a little bit different, but I think I've clarified a couple of points for you. And I'm going to read to you a little bit about, this also provides some direction of the school. And since it keeps me focused, I want to read my response. There was a concern about the continuation school was a name only. It is also suggested that the school teaches the same number of hours and uses the same curriculum. Further, there was a concern that the school enrolls ninth graders. There was a comment about limited curriculum citing English, language, arts, and math, and possibly history, and that the continuation students take science electives and other courses from Santa Barbara High. Lastly, the concern about students participating in athletics teams, or I might assume the potential for athletic teams, was also cited. I want to just assure you that the school is not in name only. The bell schedule that we have has been developed, and I'm going to tangent a little bit. We've got this also approved by Anna Hernandez. I mean, I worked on this thing for a long time, so we have to do this right. Anna does this, and so, she has really, you know, helped me a lot. But for you, for your own information, we operate on the same bell schedule for a couple of reasons, and I think the board needs to know this. We're not identifying these kids on the campus. We're not putting... We're not identifying these kids on the campus. We're not putting them in separate buildings. We're not giving them name tags. We're not putting them out in another school. They're not even going down to the old LaCuesta site. They're in normal, everyday classrooms to operate from. Because it's an open entry, open exit program. And I'll explain how that works, but we don't want these kids to be or feel isolated. The only difference with this population, they have an intensive math and English Language Arts curriculum. What I found, and again, this is just through my data, through my research, we have a multitude of kids coming from the junior high who aren't ready for high school. They're just not ready. They're not academically prepared. They're two, three, four grade levels under in each of the two core academic areas. The ones where we feel like if they have a literacy-based or some knowledge, they're going to be successful in other areas of the school. So I've chosen English Language Arts and Math, one and a half hour intensive programs, and the kids just flip flop. So there's ninth and 10th grade, 30 kids in the program. They're going to just flip flop. And I'll explain how they're selected in a few minutes, but the program then allows for a third period because that would be four hours in the program. So there will be concurrent enrollment in Santa Barbara High School. And you need to, they don't just go for four hours. They're there for six. They're the same six hours our kids are there. They're not individualized. They're not a unique population. They're part of who we are. And we want them to be that way because they're our kids. So we have a unique opportunity to make this work and that's really the plan. One of the things that I received even this morning, and Norm was there, we had a league meeting this morning and I made a proposal. I had to call CIF just to be sure, but schools within a school operate under a different boundary than schools outside of the school. But because the CDS numbers are different, the likelihood of them being able to participate in our athletic program, it's not out of the question. Because we're operating as a school within a school. And as long as they're on the same campus, the CIF approves that. So I talked with, I have some friends down there. I made some calls. We're able to do that. They can participate. But what they need is not necessarily their approval. They need our league approval. And so this morning I asked for league approval. And between three Santa Barbara schools, the two Ventura schools, it was unanimous. Because we're all pretty much getting into the same boat. There's continuation schools operating on a lot of these campuses and they're feeling like, hey, this could be something that is attractive to this particular student. So it is another sort of hook that we want to get the kids. We want to not let them feel as though, hey, because you're in another campus, you don't get to do anything. And that's not, that's not the operation of the school. And I don't want to create that presentation, not at all. They're in as much of part of Santa Barbara High School as we are. And that's, that's just got to be real clear. The, back to the bell schedule, we're going to operate on the same bell schedule. You know, the fourth period comes, they go to lunch. Fifth period, they go to two different classes. They get to be an integral part of our program. The aligning of schedules provides the continuation school with the opportunity for concurrent enrollment. I mentioned that to you. And they're going to meet with counselors in the same comprehensive high school. We're not changing the counselors. We're going to assign a counselor to that population, but they're not going to change counselors. They're going to have the same counselors as they would if they were enrolled in, you know, the Santa Barbara High School CDS number. The, satisfy the concern about the paragraph, I think with the athletics, because that came up as, you know, it would be helpful if we communicated and I feel badly almost for saying that, but we're not going to sneak people out into sports. I have 73 sports teams. Each of them are under the same guidelines. And for me to put an athlete out there that is not eligible is completely foolish. That's a career ender for most of us. We don't do that knowingly or willingly. And so we have to ask questions. And this relationship I've had with CIF goes back 30 years. And we know each other well. We can ask questions. We feel confident that if we give the right explanation, that we're going to be in good shape. And this was like a no-brainer for these guys. This is like a great experience. Give it to them. Just make sure that your league's okay with it. So that everybody understands in advance. And today that happened. So it's a good thing. The, there was a concern about low achieving students are directed to Santa Barbara High School, I'm sorry, Santa Barbara Continuation High School mostly from SBJHS. In fact, most are economically disadvantaged Latinos. This is a comment I got. This comes from a memo. Under the traditional system, these students would have been enrolled in Santa Barbara High School along with everyone else. Now they go to Santa Barbara High Campus but are tracked into a new continuation school. And it says, I don't think this can be done involuntarily, but I have heard that various means are being used to make it all but mandatory. I'm, I gotta be honest, I'm insulted by this. It's not fair. Nobody's talked to us. That's a completely unfair statement. This concern about having low achievement, you know, I brought an article here, in fact, I brought a book. This is a magazine that I get regularly from curriculum development people. And this whole one is devoted to English Language learners. And I'm going to share that everything in this counters everything in the memo I received. And so I'm sure we can find data to support anything. These people I trust. These people we work with all the time. And they're in the business. They're in the business day in and day out and they deal with these kids nonstop. And they are here to provide us with some excellent opportunities for English Language learners. And so for somebody to say that this is, we're going to track these kids because of their ethnicity or because of their, that, it's an insult. We're not going to do this. This is 2009. It's just not going to happen. And I need the board to be clear about this. This is, there's an article in here called Solving California's Dropout Crisis. And I could leave this with you. I don't necessarily want to read it all, but I will share with you that the continuation high school in California address the academic needs of extremely at-risk kids. You know what? They're not talking about ethnicity here. This is a program. We're not concerned about what ethnic population they come from. I'm looking at kids who are struggling, who are below grade level, who if we don't do something early, we're going to be doing this in grade 11. And that's where we do it today. If we don't have this opportunity, we do it in grade 11. Because there's nothing for these kids in grades nine and 10 in this school district other than this program. And by grades nine and 10, if we don't catch them early, we're being asked now to do in four years what should have been done in six. Because they're multiple Fs. They're struggling. They're grade and grade and grade below level. And it's tragic. And it's terrible. So it's not an identification by ethnicity. It's not an identification by anything except three things. CST scores, teacher recommendation, and prior grades. That's really what we're looking at. We're looking at every walk of life because this is truly an intervention that we would not have access to if we didn't have 912. They'd be in the regular program. They'd fail for the next two years. We'd catch them at grade 11. We'd send them to Kathy if she had room for them and we'd hope for the best. Because now we would be asking to do in two years what we could have done in six. And that's tragic. We can't let it go that long. So this article is actually very good, but it does talk about many of the students engage in high-risk behaviors such as cigarette use, drug, alcohol, or sexual activity. Some combination, the students are already parenting and for the first, second, or third time. The majority of these students are socio-economically deprived and are also continuation high school students throughout the state of California. So we're trying to lower that. I mean, that's, we're trying to catch these kids early enough to prevent some of these things from taking place. It was also stated that they go to Santa Barbara High School campus but are tracked into the continuation school. And it says, I don't think this can be done involuntarily, but I've heard that various means are being used. What's insulting about that statement is almost that we just forced them into this class. Nobody was there. Nobody saw what we saw. And I'm going to give this to you. In fact, all students and their parents were identified by previous CST scores, teacher recommendation, and current educational status. That's what we use this year, already this year. We started this thing in the fall. They were then interviewed for the program to determine eligibility and level of comfort. Do you know, I have kids who really wanted in the program because, but because of an elective class that was offered during the time we were offering this program, decided not to go? They were given a chance to go and decided not to. We're not forcing anybody in here. They made a decision. But we interviewed every kid that went into that program and every parent was interviewed prior to anybody going in. In fact, we wouldn't just let them in without the interview. And I think that's something that was missed somewhere. It was just, it wasn't asked. Not all the students decided to participate, not because they didn't want to go, but their schedules would not allow it. After the students committed to the program, meetings were held with the parents to provide information and to deal with any concerns they may have for their student. And then lastly, this educational code and it's 48, 4, 3, 2, 5, whatever was illustrated, the process for and the implementation of assigning pupils to continuation schools. And includes the rules and regulations to govern the procedures for involuntary transfer of pupil to continuation schools. We're not involuntarily transferring anybody. That was not part of the game. It was not part of, it's like we were doing this. There was no game involved. These kids, it was a serious interview. We had teachers, we had assistant principals, and we had parents. When the kids said they don't want in, we were fine with that. We find another student. What we were offering was an opportunity. That's what we were offering. And if they chose not to take it, that was fine. We would have to work with them another way. Our first goal was to find out the difference between the kids who can't and the kids who won't. They both have different agendas. And that's not being looked at in a normal, everyday setting. That's really hard. We're struggling with that today, even in our regular classrooms. This was designed to identify those kids and give them an opportunity at that time. There was a question here again, and I'm sorry for lingering here, but this is, I want to hit just one last thing. There was a, articles about consensus among educators of the needs of students for two or more grade levels. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I would offer, I would gladly make copies of this book for you. Because this truly highlights the need for smaller class size, for more intensive education, early intervention. Where the memo that I received countered all of that. And I don't know how this happens, but we have to, we operate on a different basis. And I want to make sure that the board with whom I'm speaking understands where we're coming from, at least myself as an educator. That's really what we're trying to do at Santa Barbara High School.
Thank you, or do you want to keep?
I have one more small point.
Okay.
This one is the one, says, this, there was a quote in here about the reaction was, they're gaming the accountability system. And I feel like if I fail to mention this as a last point, I would be, I wouldn't, I couldn't come up here. It talks about, here's what the statement means. Students who were formerly pulled from Santa Barbara High's test scores, pulled Santa Barbara High's test scores down will no longer be appearing on the books. This should raise the academic performance index and make it adequate, oh, make the adequate yearly progress. There is no downside to the district because less demands testing regime is available to continuation schools. Test scores may be the name of the game, but in the opinion of this author who wrote this, however, this is not the way to play it. I want to tell you, I don't see this as a game. The nub of the problem is expectations and it goes on further to talk about the culture and who's involved. And that part to me is embarrassing. But then it talks about moving the kids so that our API scores go up. So my concern about that is that they're gaming the accountability. While I don't take any of this personally, I never take this personally, I have to tell you, but it's an insult. And it's also degrading to the school. And frankly, I got to be honest with you. I need to know that this is not the opinion of the entire board. That this may be the opinion of one person. Because for me, I, this could be a career ender for me. I need to know who I'm working for and with. And if that's the opinion of the board, I have to, we have to have some discussions. Because I'm alarmed at this kind of a statement that says, we're going to move these kids so our test scores go up. That's insulting to me. And if I left without saying that, I would not be able to look at myself in the mirror. Because it is truly insulting for me that somebody would say that. And it's disappointing as a high school principal. And it's more disappointing as an educator. And after 30 years of this, to have this come out in this day and age is not right. And it's completely unfair to my school. That part, I'll be quiet. What I'd like to do is to provide you all with a copy of, and then just have you, I want to just sort of walk you through what the plan is at this point, from, at least from this point forward. Okay, in the initial thing, and this is going to be quick because this is the program. In the fall of 2008, they were, we looked at this entering grade nine with multiple Fs and poor CST scores in grade seven and eight. And then the additional factors were concurrent performance in core academic subjects, poor social skills in classrooms, interviews with instructors, student interviews, and parent interviews. So it was, you know, it was comprehensive. We were not given a lot of time. I got to be honest with you, but we did put this together. And identifying these kids wasn't, wasn't hard. I mean, trust me, they're like coming out of the woodwork for us. And they're self-identifying most of the time. But the grade for eligibility for 2009, so in the fall of 2009, these are the kids that we're looking at. Just so you have an idea, multiple Ds and Fs, academic deficient, grade level in English Language Arts and Math, poor CST scores in grade seven. We won't have a lot of this data back until after the kids are enrolled at our school. And that's, that's the way it is. We, we're always, you know, getting the data a little bit late. Teacher recommendation. And then we're also going to meet, and I've talked to John Beckio already, we're going to meet, I'm going to meet with John. We're going to talk to his counselors. We're going to get some parents and students. And we're going to have these kids pre-identified before we, before the fall, before the summer, rather. Before, excuse me, the end of school. So we're going to have some parent interviews already. Grade 10, again, it's multiple Ds and Fs, CST scores, recommendation. And then we're going to meet with the counselors and the assistant principals to define the 30 students that we feel would have the most benefit from this program. We have other issues, discipline, attendance, students do not perform well in traditional academic setting. You know, we have to take these in consideration. And we have a one-size school, a one-size-fits-all sort of format. And we're trying to move away from that. We're migrating from that. Slowly but surely, we're getting there. And this is just one of the advantages to our school. Grades 11 and 12 is credit recovery. Okay? We have kids who need credit recovery. Oftentimes, we call Kathy, we inundate her school. Sometimes she can't take them and then we're sort of stuck. If I have a place to move these kids where we can do some other intensive work for them, that we're really going to try to place these kids. These kids, again, they don't perform well in these programs. And then we, as a result, they're disciplined in academic issues. This is an open entry, open exit program. I'm just going to summarize. It's a nine-week deal. Kids come in intensive for nine weeks. We give them a benchmark CST that every other student in the school takes for grade level. If they pass, they're out. If they don't pass, they're back in for nine weeks. Okay, it's that simple. English Language Arts and Math. While they're there, ninth graders will be enrolled in a health class, 10th graders will be enrolled in world history. So if they're there for the entire year, they're going to get, we're going to maximize their efforts. Okay? The assessment, we're really trying to do, all of these kids are going to have a prior assessment. And that's new. It's not unique to schools. It would be new to us. But we're going to start doing pre-assessments in all these classes anyway. So that we have an idea, what's the level of our students in our classes. I think that's pretty important. Then students are going to be identified from those who can't, those who won't. That's not hard. And I mentioned that earlier. Ongoing standards-based formative assessments are going to be used to monitor students. It's a systematically tracking, documenting progress towards the learning outcomes. And again, it culminates with a nine-week benchmark assessment. So we're going to have formative assessments like we would in a normal class. But the benchmark assessment is the assessment that identifies, am I where everybody else is and to what degree? Okay? And that's pretty, pretty common with us. We're really, we've got, I think, the greater majority of our staff now is giving a benchmark assessment. It's something that, it's not just in English Language Arts. It's something that I mandated this year. So we have them in every core academic subject at Santa Barbara High School, every nine weeks. Okay, so we give them at nine, 18, and 27. Those are the entry dates for this program and also the exit dates for this program. The courses, some of the benefits, avid strategies, communication skills, integration, you can read this, but these are some of the courses. These are some of the types of programs that we're going to bring to the table. The students, it's an hour and a half of English, an hour and a half of math. If you looked at the instructors, you could see also that teacher A, B, C, and D, if this program were to go this far in the first year, which is really what the plan is, because I think we have a need. I can always work backwards, but once you build a master schedule, it's really hard to make it go the other way. So you can see what a typical schedule would look like for a teacher, but you'll notice period four, where it says IS and IS. That's another thing that we're going to have in place for all of our students. If there's a serious problem, and trust me, this particular semester, we have a lot going on at this school that is, is taking kids from our campus in a whole host of ways. Everything from trials to family problems to illness that kids need an additional place to go. Independent study is something that we're going to offer to these kids. And it's going to be those teachers that are working in this program will have to see about 10 to 15 kids ongoing for independent study throughout the course of the year. So that's what that, that's what that looks like. You can see where the health, world history is, but you notice period five, they all have a common prep. Okay, that's a benefit to the program. So these teachers will all be collaborating together about the same kids. And that's, that's different. And then you can see what we have for period six, that they're going to go on their way for another particular course. And that's pretty much what their schedule would look like. I won't go into all the different instructional strategies. You can take a look at those, but you can see that our teachers are going to be modeling instructional strategies. We have a lot of stuff in place for them right now. One of the things we found, walked through with the program improvement that we're in, was that we need more student-to-student engagement. We saw 66 classrooms in four periods with 14 people. And we saw a lot of what I'm doing with you right now. And that's not the way it's supposed to be. So we're making some serious changes in the fall. You can see on the backside, the different programs that we have and the interactive instruction. I'm also using Cyber High. I probably have 25 kids enrolled at Cyber High right now at my school. And it truly is an opportunity for kids that are struggling in other areas. And it's, it's an option. Starting in the fall, all of our kids are going to be able to take up the 20 units online as a program experiment for the school. And right now, we're using Cyber High because it is the only one that's truly UCCSU-approved. That's the program. Now I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Capito.
Okay. Is, oh, Carlos is here. When'd you show up?
It's only six o'clock.
I was trying to get you here late. You're on. Then they can ask questions.
All right, Mr. Williams.
I, I know a couple of you. Hello? Basically, the program I'm in support of, this is where I first started, when I started it in, in public education. And there it was a mandated LaCuesta continuation school. It was over at the Ladera Apartments. And it was a horrible, horrible situation. But we called it a learning environment. This, I had some questions about, but because it's a nine-week recycle, that gives the kids the opportunity to come in, make the adjustments, and then leave. And I'm somewhat suspect about nine weeks. Because of the kids that I'm dealing with now, I'm not sure if I can make those behavioral changes. Because we're talking about kids that maybe don't want to learn. And so we have to go through some serious team building to figure out how to get these kids to want to learn. Not that they can't, but they're choosing to be obstinate. And that's what I found this year for the ninth graders, it was, it was. And that's what I found, uh, this year, for the ninth graders, it was, it was so blatant. These kids that came from the junior high, they refused to learn. And I equated it to a teacher, um, in the Wild Kingdom, where you have the, um, the hyenas circling a, a deer. You know, these kids were well-versed on how to disrupt and, and diffuse lesson plans so that they were able to not do much of anything. And so those are the kids, and these are all kids I really like. And these are kids that are in athletics, at least tried to, but they weren't eligible. And so somehow, we got to figure out, within a nine-week period, how to flip a switch and be able to provide instruction for them and have them be receptive to learning. And that, to me, is going to be the key. The reading, writing, arithmetic is the easy part. It's one, getting them to want to learn is going to be the, 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 the challenge. And so, I volunteered to be part of the program. We will incorporate all of our counselors. Little side note, however survive, how many survive. But we will incorporate whoever's there. Um, I will be the lead counselor dealing with, um, many of these, these kids and the families. So, that's, uh, off-the-cuff, um, involvement with counseling, but I see counseling being in, in all aspects, uh, of this, of this bridge program.
Thank you.
Okay.
Board members, questions and comments? Shall we go ahead and take public comment first?
Sure. Kate Smith?
I'd like to commend Principal Mark Caprito and Mr. Williams. This is an excellent program. But it's not the Bridge Program. It's not your program. I'm asking that you give Mr. Caprito and Mr. Williams the El Puente students who have been expelled into a toxic wasteland. I want to remind you that our children need and deserve democratic education. The definition is engaged, relevant, and socially conscious curriculum in a cooperative and supportive atmosphere with an embrace of diversity, with an accommodation of different learning styles, and a fair distribution of funds. You take those gang task force funds, those $400,000 that you're going to give to outreach workers at each schools, you give it to the schools and to teachers to teach what the students want to learn in a cooperative and supportive atmosphere, you will have success. In terms of the Bridge Program, there's no school community. There's just the target, the male Hispanic with school failure, truance of behavior problems, or hallelujah, thank God for zero tolerance, you just push them right into El Puente. ACLU, School to Prison Pipeline. The racial justice program is committed to challenging the School to Prison Pipeline, a disturbing national trend wherein children are funneled out of the public schools and into the juvenile and justice, criminal justice systems. Many of these children have learning disabilities or histories of poverty, abuse, neglect, and would benefit from additional educational and counseling services. Instead, they are isolated, punished, and pushed out. Zero tolerance policies criminalize minor infractions of school rules, while high-stakes testing programs encourage educators to push out low-performing students to improve their school's overall test scores. Students of color are especially vulnerable to push-out trends and the discriminatory, discriminatory application of discipline. The ACLU believes that children should be educated, not incarcerated.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
We are working to challenge numerous policies and practices within public school systems.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to comment on this, the presentation.
Yes.
First of all, I would, I would like to comment directly to Mr. Caprito. I hope that the memo that you signed, so that you know who, from whom it came, and I can't speak for my colleagues, although, um, I certainly, having not heard any of that from them, I would assume that they didn't share that opinion, but they'll have to speak for themselves. I can tell you that I certainly did not share the opinion that was represented in that memo. Um, and I hope that you are not under the impression that it represented a board perspective, because it definitely was coming from one individual. Um, and I appreciate the work that you are doing with the Bridge Program. I think that the intent behind it is actually a very positive one, and I also appreciate the fact that the students are integrated into the campus as fully as they, they can be in the situation that they're in. So, um, I definitely did not want you or the rest of the campus community to be under the assumption that the board as a whole shares those, um, opinions.
Mrs. Deacon?
Um, well, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you, Dr. Caprito, and also Mr. Williams, for coming here this evening. It's obviously put a lot of hard work into this, you're passionate about it, I appreciate your forthright discussion of, of this memo. I want you to know that it never dawned on me that this program was anything but what it is, which is a forward-thinking idea, and a way to address critical issues that we know we need to work on. And I appreciate your taking the time and energy, really, to come up with some novel approaches, and I really like the seamless interface with the larger school environment, because I think that's really important. So, it's unfortunate the whole board isn't here this evening to hear what you had to say, but, uh, I certainly think it's a terrific idea, and I thank you for pursuing it.
Thank you, and I'll concur with my colleagues in that, absolutely, that was from one board member and not from the board, and I absolutely do not hold those views myself. Few things for me. What is your average class size? You'll, you'll need to turn that back on. Mm-hmm. Let me see if I, there you go.
The, the average class size right now is, is still going to be right around 30, but remember, it's spread out over an hour and a half.
Mm-hmm.
So it will give us an opportunity to work in triads and small groups, where in a, otherwise we couldn't. We're, we're aiming at 30, but I'm not convinced that we're, you know, we're going to be there, and it needs to be the right 30.
Mm-hmm.
Because putting the wrong 30 in is just fueling the fire, and it will only give us what we have in other classes. So we, we have to make that part work.
So you don't get any kind of extra funding that would help you to produce class size?
No.
That's unfortunate.
Well, we're, we're in discussions about that. I'm, I'm not going to say no, let me just, that's not fair to these guys, and, and, I'm going to feel it in my back when I walk out the door. We're working on that, so don't, don't let that, you know, we're, they're, that part of the discussion is still ongoing.
Yes, because, uh, obviously, from the La Cuesta example and everything you hear about the kids that are really at this level of risk, class size does make a big difference.
Right.
And, and, but dramatically smaller makes a difference.
Yeah, the, the one balance I have is, I'm going to have to try to buy two periods somewhere, you know, at a minimum, to, to open this up for an hour and a half, and, and that's just something that we have to do.
Mm-hmm. And student scores. So student scores from, uh, the Bridge Program would go to, you'd, you'd get some sort of, I don't know, ASAM score?
Well, that's interesting, because, yeah, if, if you've worked with the ASAM, it is different. So we would have to come up with the three to five things that we're really going to work on. And for us, we would want to be real critical about what we identify. So often, you do, you know, grades and attendance and discipline. And, and that may very well be where we are, and that's okay if that's what we decide as a group. We want to look at our student population initially, and we could offer those three as the behaviors or the changes that we would like to see the outcomes.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think, and Kathy might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I know the ASAM report, and it's been a couple of years since I've been involved with ASAM versus the, the other, you know, the regular testing. But they've added some opportunities for you to, a little bit more flexibility for you to come up with some that are acceptable to them, and I think that's the direction we want to go. Because we're going to have, as an open entry, open exit, we're not going to have the same kids. We don't want the same kids two, two quarters in a row. That's really what we're trying to avoid.
But these students are taking the CSTs.
Well, they, they will be, but we have a, there's a timeframe for that, and the timeframe has to be within X number of days of enrollment, and I think it's October 1st or something, so where they are enrolled on that day is where their scores are going to go.
Okay.
I mean, our goal, truly, our goal would be to, to close ourselves down. Ultimately, we would do that. Unfortunately, some of this means job security, right, on the other hand?
And there's always new students coming in.
Absolutely. So we want to keep them moving.
I guess maybe this is, um, a question for Dr. Hayden, and that is, can these scores be, um, can you give the board, when the scores come out, uh, Santa Barbara High with these students' CST scores? So that there would be no question? I mean, obviously, in terms of the official report, there would be an official report, but could the board get a report saying this is, if these students' scores were included, this is what it would look like?
It would be easy to do for, uh, the AYP and the STAR. The API would be much more difficult to do. The, um, truth of the matter is, is that it, I don't think it's going to have much of influence on, uh, changing Santa Barbara High School's No Child Left Behind scores or its STAR scores. But we can produce that, yes.
For the AYP and STAR, I think it'd be worthwhile, even just to show that it doesn't really have an effect.
Sure.
I think that that would be worthwhile for board members that, uh, since we obviously have one that has that concern, I think that that might be worthwhile to do.
If I may chime in, I think that would be important as well, to determine whether there is a change in the trajectory of these kids' academic performance by whatever measures we have. So if we could do our own in-house study, it would be our, to our advantage.
I, I would like to add one thing to that, too, is that, um, unfortunately, I don't see Santa Barbara High coming out of program improvement. So the whole issue here is, should not be focused on whether they're going to make No Child Left Behind or not, because they're not. The focus should be on the kids in the program, and if they are improving or not. So whether they make a big change or a small change in Santa Barbara High's overall performance on these tests, I think should be a secondary and a small secondary issue. That would be my statistical analysis of it.
Thank you, that's a good point. I have one request for you, Dr. Caprito. And that is, I, I would like, I mean, right now, there's no attachment up on, on, for, for this particular item on our agenda, and I don't know if this is something that you have on the Santa Barbara High website, um, but I would like it to, to go on, get posted later as an attachment. My one suggestion would be, you have, um, the teacher's schedule listed here. Would it be possible to add a typical student's schedule so that it's really clear? And also to mention that there's concurrent enrollment with Santa Barbara High, so that, that it's not just that these kids are only doing these periods with these teachers, but that they're also really participating, uh, in classes still at Santa Barbara High. So if you could make that clear in this document, I think that would kind of round it out and, and make it easier for members of the public to see what you're doing.
Okay, it's, it is written in there, that it's, it's concurrent enrollment, I mean, it's, it's, there's a dialogue, I believe, but I will add that as a schedule so that it's visual as well.
Yeah, that would be great. And that's it for me. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Caprito.
And thanks again for getting us here, like, early. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're scheduled now to go to item E3, but I would like to go ahead and take our break early, if board members don't object. If we could just maybe take a 10-minute break, um, and then we will come back.
And let, let me.
We have two speakers on this item? Or do, do we want in?
Uh, Dr. Sarvis, did you have something you wanted to say for?
Well, we've had brief board discussion of this, as you know, there's very little consensus. However, uh, state funding for education is really dependent upon 1A and 1B, and there is some movement afoot to try and get those two resolutions through, even though it isn't popular to gut mental health, to gut, uh, perhaps that's not a good choice of term, uh, child development, and, and to gamble with gambling. So, uh, there is some consensus on 1A and 1B, and we think we should be standing shoulder to shoulder with, uh, CTA on this, uh, with other employees, organizations, and press for the passage of 1A, 1B.
Okay, public comment?
Yes. Lane Wheeler, followed by Kate Smith.
Lane Wheeler at Santa Barbara Teacher Association, I've spoken on this before, I'll be very brief, I would encourage you to pass this. It is not the best of our choices, but is the choice that we have to deal with, and the reduction of services, because our state is in a financial crisis, will only serve to negatively impact the very people that we serve in our district. The children and the parents of our school district will suffer as a result of this bond measure not being passed. So I would encourage you to vote yes and approve this, uh, bond measure, or, excuse me, approve this part.
Opposition is the word.
Proposition.
Resolution.
These proposition resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Ms. Smith?
I hope you read Bill Saroni, uh, the County Office of Education Superintendent, his article, uh, it was an opinion article in the Santa Barbara News Press this Sunday. He is recommending that you vote no on these propositions. I'd like to read, uh, to you, from California Education Reform Meltdown by K. Lloyd Billingsley, Sacramento, California. Last week, the Capitol was abuzz over getting down to facts. The massive series of privately-funded education reports coordinated through Stanford University. The responses to these reports missed some key realities. The reports confirm that California education is a mess, burdened with complicated and counterproductive system of finance. To bring every student up to speed under current conditions would cost more than 1 trillion per year, according to one estimate from which the researchers have distanced themselves. According to another, to bring California students in line with the goals of the federal No Child Left Behind Act will require spending increases of 53% to 71%. Press accounts hail the reports as proof of the need for at least a 40% increase in education funding. That came as good news to the axis of teacher unions, free-spending politicians, and education bureaucrats, whose single reform idea is more money! The researchers are divided about the need for spending, but united on a key point. Absent meaningful reforms, no amount of money would do the job, something even Assembly Speaker Fabian Nunez seems to realize. Quote, "If money alone guaranteed a good education, then Paris Hilton would have a PhD." He told reporters, "My apologies to Paris Hilton, that's not really nice." California now spends a total of $67 billion per year, all sources included, on K through 12 education, and the reports confirm that a lot of it is misspent through wasteful categorical programs and fraud. The standard response to the Stanford reports is that California needs both more spending and reform.
30 seconds.
A better response would be to take this data as the latest evidence that California's K through 12 system is essentially unreformable. There is an education politico-industrial complex that has gripped our school system. It is an unholy alliance between the schools, juvenile justice, law enforcement, and nonprofits that feed at the public.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Funding trough. Thanks so much.
Board members?
Nice talking to you.
Resolution 2008, 2009 dash 38, supporting state ballot propositions 1A and 1B.
Well, I feel like we have been finding ourselves in this position quite a lot these days of having to live with imperfect solutions. But the operative word being having to, because we often have no choice, and I think this is sort of, as Mr. Wheeler pointed out, one of those cases. So I will move to approve this, uh, resolution.
Mrs. Deacon?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 All right. Yes. I, and, uh, I know that we all hope that people will actually get out and vote May 19th, uh, or send in their ballots now, um, because we need this to pass. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I also want to say that even though it is not the perfect solution, it is a solution that we need desperately. So I do hope that people will support it, even though, um, it may have its flaws, because the alternative is too dire to contemplate.
We will now move on to item F2, approval of the study agreement for evaluation of[1780.51] the Santa Barbara School District's gang outreach program.
Mr. Gonzalez will give this report. Let me just give a little background. At the time that the board earmarked $100,000 for the outreach worker position, we were talking about two separate outreach workers for six months. After the steering meeting, we came back to the board and we asked the board to extend that to a one-year position, just one position.
For an entire year rather than two positions for six months, because permanence and staying power are important to this process. At the time, there was also board discussion about having an independent evaluation of the effectiveness of this program. And I understood that to be board direction to put something together, and we've since had discussions in the steering committee. Although I do want to make it clear that the board at no point said, "We are earmarking this money for the purpose of evaluation." I understood that there was enough money, simply enough money, in that budget, in that $100,000 for the outreach worker, and to go ahead with any evaluation. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you very much. Based on the comments that the superintendent just shared with you, we did approach a number of different possible sources for evaluation. We have settled on Dr. Rios based on his background, research, as well as teaching in the area of gangs and youth violence and youth culture. The proposal being presented to you as an attachment has a cost of $26,000. The board, on October 14th, 2008, one of the stipulations that they did make regarding this evaluation is that they wanted an outside, independent evaluation, which is why we went outside of our district to put together this proposal. The measures, if you look at the second paragraph of the cover memo, with your permission, I'm going to read just a few lines. "The evaluation is designed to measure the student's attachment to school, parents, community, and the interactions between students and the outreach worker. Specific measures that we're going to be looking at is changes in school attendance. We're hoping for an increase in school attendance. We're hoping for, we'll be evaluating the grades earned. We're hoping for an increase in GPA. We're going to be looking at the number of disciplinary violations. The hope is that by virtue of this program, we will see a decrease in disciplinary violations referrals. We're going to be looking at the whole concept of parental attachment, school commitment, percent change in gang membership, percent change in gang-related delinquent behavior, percent change in gang-related violent crimes, percent change in gang-related drug crimes, changes in attitudes towards gangs, changes in the rate of substance abuse, and finally, change in the percentage of gang-related arrests." The actual proposal is attached to F2, and as Dr. Sarves indicated, the costs are beared by the carryover of the pupil retention block grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members?
I have a question. I read with interest the minutes of the steering committee where you discussed at length the, this process. And one of the things that was expressed as a concern was the ability of students or their families to understand the evaluation tool. And there was assurance by Dr. Rios that they would be assisted in their ability to answer that. And I guess my only concern was that sometimes when you assist people, there's the potential you can lead them into a given response. And so I'm wondering how they're going to assure that the responses they get, you know, are valid.
I will share with you that Dr. Rios has been involved with a number of evaluations. He's currently conducting a, two evaluations. One on a group of students at El Puente, and another one, another study with students that are actually meeting at La Casa de la Raza and are gang members. We have explored with Dr. Rios the concern the board expressed in the previous meeting and the concerns that have been expressed in the steering committee. And he remains confident, as we do, that those issues to help clarify and make sure that the responses from the participants are bias-free, that we can do that. And he does have a track record of being able to assist youngsters in completing these kinds of evaluations.
Thank you. Mrs. Cordero, is there anything you wanted to add in right now?
As part of this task force, I just, I don't have a lot of questions about this. I do want to say that my familiarity with Dr. Rios suggests to me that he is very, very committed to maintaining the integrity of the research that he does. And so I think that he would make a very special point of ensuring that they didn't influence the outcome, because he really approaches his research seriously. So I would not have that as a concern. I was a little bit, I was questioning a little bit the, whether we would be using that money. If we didn't use it for the evaluation, what it would go to?
The, if we didn't use the money, let me answer the question a different way. Right now, our outreach worker is working on two field trips. We do not have a exact cost of the field trips. One of them is going to be down to the Los Angeles area. The other one, I believe, is over to the Museum of Tolerance. I suspect that those trips will run probably about $350 to $500 each. The monies, and so to answer your question, is the monies are not specifically earmarked for a purpose. Back when the board approved $100,000, they approved the $100,000 for the entire program, including any training costs that might be associated, any field trips, any equipment that might be needed. For example, we have supplied our outreach worker with a BlackBerry. So those costs are part of that amount of being submitted to the pupil retention block grant. But there is no specific use that we have earmarked for those funds.
Let me just share what my quandary is. That is, given that, that the money is really sort of in this pool of money, and we use it for the various needs of that position, I'm sort of torn between the idea that if we didn't spend that money to do this extensive of an evaluation process, we might actually increase the success of the outreach worker by being able to provide additional support and resources. On the other hand, we wouldn't know that without doing the evaluation. So I feel like we're sort of in a catch-22, that we might actually be influencing the outcome by using the money to evaluate it. But I, so I'm a little bit torn, because I feel that, I personally feel that this is an important position. So I don't want, I would like to give it all the support that we can, but at the same time, I don't want to maybe call into question the effectiveness of it by not doing a full evaluation. So I guess I'm just wondering a little bit how my colleagues feel about that.
I absolutely see your point, and that's difficult, because, you know, obviously in public education, you're always trading off. But I really think that having an evaluation is key, especially sort of as a baseline. If it is something that, where we saw areas of concern, that there, you know, places that we could improve it, that we could spend more money on it in the future, hopefully, and have more resources available. I really think that we need that information. Mrs. Deacon?
I'm sorry if you mentioned this already, but can we revisit the issue, the timeframe? I mean, is this the appropriate time to do it? Do we, has enough occurred? Has the intervention specialists had the opportunity to make a difference yet?
I think that the best way to answer the question is probably the evaluation. Starting the evaluation in a formal way is long overdue. Part of an effective evaluation talks about pre-testing as well as post-testing. We're rapidly losing our ability to make an effective pre-testing type assessment, so...
All right. Is there any public comment on this?
Yes, there is. We have one public comment. Kate Smith.
All right. Mrs. Smith, I'm going to remind you from the beginning of the public comments that each, the total time, hold on, I'm going to read the right section here. "When a speaker wishes to comment on multiple items, his or her time may be limited, so as not to interfere with the timely completion of the board's business. Because of the fire and because we want to get out of here so that we can go take care of needs at our own homes, I'm going to reduce your time from three minutes to two minutes with no board objection, so that we can keep moving this along, because I know that you have multiple speaker slips in."
The outreach worker is taking funds from the pupil retention block grant, and that outreach worker, by law, is supposed to have dropout prevention coursework. I know that that was not on the job description. In fact, the job description did circumnavigate the personnel department. All these changes of percentages of arrests and perceptions, it's all just bureaucratic poop. You said on October 14th that the job description was two positions. And I pointed that out. Okay. You get to have two positions, because that's what you wanted. Two positions, and it's all dependent on the money, because the money is all we really care about, getting this outreach worker. And what we know is that after seven months, you have nothing but more bureaucratic poop. You don't have any strategies for prevention or intervention. All you have is an outreach worker. Now, here's something about the outreach worker. He's supposed to be working with the students for 75% of the time in the schools. Now, just when is he going to be working with the students? Oh, my, not when they're supposed to be in class, because we're dealing with pupil retention. They have to be in class. Oh, my, he can't work with them when they're transitioning to class, because then they'd be tardy. They are not allowed to be worked with when it's...
30 seconds.
When it's during lunch or recess, because by law, this is the student's social time. And they cannot, their time is protected by law. And if you're going on field trips, why don't you go to the Jewish Federation that has a world-class Holocaust museum? They have speakers who were a part of the Holocaust. And I went with San Marcos, Ms. Jacobson's gate class, and they saw them up to the...
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
The movie, If You Cry, You Die.
All right. Board members, is there a motion?
I would like to move to approve the study agreement for evaluation of the Santa Barbara High School, or the Santa Barbara School District's gang outreach program.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, with Heron and Noel missing. Next up is item F3, nomination and approval of board member representative to the South Coast Gang Task Force Leadership Council.
This is the leadership council for the community collaborative effort. It will have other people on the council, from city council, from other school boards like carpentry, and they are requesting a representative from this board, a board member, to sit on that leadership council.
Thank you, board members. Is... Is any member willing to volunteer herself at this time?
I would be willing to volunteer.
All right. We have public comment on it?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith, two minutes.
I was at this meeting last week. It was headed by Marty Bloom, and she would only recognize one of my public speaking requests out of five. It is all the politicos in the education-politico-industrial complex. And these are the, this leadership council was supposed to get the funds from the DA's truancy program transition, you know, that was for the administrative things. But it was reported by Nick Welsh on January 15th in The Independent, that unfortunately, they didn't get those funds. That was all coming from the schools for outreach workers and administrative stuff. Bill Saroni promised a lot of funds in that DA's program, but it wasn't approved. So Nick said, "Well, they're going to have the leadership council light." So Don Olson is the coordinator. He called the work vector control, and I went over what that meant. He said, "Well, because the mosquitoes can't really see the boundary lines, we have to expand our operation." Jim Armstrong said, "Well, we're going to have an outreach worker ultimately, ideally, in every school." Then the sheriff said, "Well, we've got the SWAT team, and we were just commended." Now, the sheriff said, "They're going to put GPS monitoring devices on the students..."
30 seconds.
"...so that they can get out of jail early and lead them to the gang lair. We're going to make them radioactive." That was right after Jim Armstrong, city administrator, laughed at these kids for being in school. Oh, you won't believe it. Some of them have only five credits after two years, and the highest grade is D+. Thank God. I think some of them are going to be in Mark Caprito's program.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Your time is up.
Oh, I'm just so glad you're interested.
And I just would like to remind board members that that's only one perspective, that I think we may have had members of staff that were present at that, and that is not exactly what happened. So, moving on now, we have a motion and a second.
I thought you were going to move right on from this item. We do have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had, okay.
We have a volunteer.
All right. We have a volunteer.
And I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mrs. Cordero as our representative to the South Coast Gang Task Force Leadership Council.
And I would second that. With no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you so much. I know it's another time commitment, and we have a lot on our plate, so thank you.
This is an important one.
This is extremely important.
So thank you.
We will now jump back on our agenda to item E4, the annual Latino achievement indicators. Dr. Hayden?
Good evening. Okay, so now, is this on? It is? Okay. We can proceed through this with me just giving the slides, or if you wish, I can, we can have you make comments if you wish to at the end of each slide. Would that be better?
I think, especially with just three of us here, that that might be best. Can we just, I'm going to be looking at the slides, but do try to get my attention, and I'll call on you.
Well, we'll start out with the first slide that shows the elementary school district, and we'll be going through this with the elementary school district, and then a few slides that are combined, elementary, secondary, and then the secondary school district. In the elementary district, we're about 2/3 Latino students. And this is the '08-'09 data in Aries. So the next highest percentage, you know, 27.6% white. So we're predominantly a Latino elementary school district. This is a slide that shows that the socially economically disadvantaged students are primarily Latino students. In fact, 91% of the socially economically disadvantaged students are Latino. So I think this is a very important factor into consideration when we're looking at Latino achievement indicators, that a large number of them are socially economically disadvantaged. This then shows the history of how we're doing as a district on the No Child Left Behind, the adequate yearly progress reports. And you can see here that for the English language arts, the CST English language arts, we were actually just riding right above the targets that were set. And then last year, in 2007, '08, excuse me, we dropped below them. I suspect that when the data comes in for '08-'09, that we will, once again, probably be below, because the target has moved up quite a bit. We're, of course, keep hoping that some of these programs that we're engaging in are going to pull that up, but they haven't so far. We look at the CST math, and once again, if you look at this, once again, it's a pretty flat line, and we're intersecting the target. And so for this year, the tests that are going on right now, we'll have to make really significant gains to beat the target. We won't spend a lot of time on this one. This just shows all the schools that made up those last two slides. And we're pretty much going flat here, and the target is overtaking us. The school that scored the highest was Washington... scored the highest was Washington School, but we, a couple of schools are interesting, like Cleveland is still above the target set by No Child Left Behind, and so that's kind of, and Santa Barbara Community Academy, these are fairly large Latino schools. And this is the math, and you can see, once again, we've got a few schools that are still going to make it. These schools will hopefully make it again this year for the target, but the rest of them are falling behind. This is the API mark, and the API shows a nice, steady upward slope for some of the schools. We're basically spreading out. We're tightly put together here in 2003-4, and now we're, we've spread out. So, this would bear us asking, what's going on at Washington and at Roosevelt, and this would be Community Academy, and this is Cleveland. Those schools are having nice upward growths in their API. This is a slide that I had to correct. I don't know exactly what happened the first time I put it out, but you can see that this is the number of students that are in GATE, and for the Latino population, we were down to just one percent of the total population of students, Latino students, getting into the GATE program, and last year, we increased that to two percent. And it had a lot to do with a distribution analysis that we started out doing for the GATE students. The overall percent of Latinos is nine percent jumped to sixteen percent, which is a nice growth. It's the same, it's basically the same numbers that you're seeing here, but one is looking within Latino and the other is looking at all the Latinos in the district.
And I'm going to jump in on this one and say, we have the data now for '09-10. Is that trend continuing?
No, we don't have '09-10 data. That's next year.
But I mean, the, in terms of the second grade, the tests have happened-
Yes.
And so, you know what the numbers are going to be. It's not in the system yet.
No, it's not in the system yet.
But maybe, Mrs. Sawaski, can you, do you, in your head?
I know that last year, there was about thirty students or so, thirty students that got admitted into the GATE program because of the two-step process that we used for them. This year, it was more like seven or eight, and part of the reason for that is that last year, we captured all of the third, fourth, and fifth graders into the system. And so, this year, those students didn't get captured, and so I anticipated it would drop. I didn't know it dropped down that far. So, the gain that we're seeing here may not be much the next year. We probably will not get a doubling again for the '09-10. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Sorry that, I was hoping we would get the doubling again too, but we're not going to.
I had a question about from '05-'06 to '07-'08, there was this dramatic drop.
Well, part of the drop that's occurring, and if we were to look at the numbers, there's a drop in all of them, is that that was around the time that we shifted to a new COGAT test because the old norms were getting quite old, and there were, we had some other problems that I won't go into at this point in time, but they shifted to the latest version of it, and when that shift occurred, we started having less students be in the GATE program.
So, my question was, given that, given that the, that some of those numbers were affected by that shift in the test, when we compare the forty-two in '08-'09 to the thirty-nine in '05-'06, that doesn't look like a dramatic increase in four years. Is it a bigger increase? Does it represent a bigger increase than it appears to, or not?
It does in the, in one sense, is that the test back here was old and getting to be the point that we were allowing way too many students in. This is actually, I think, a more rigorous process, so we're actually getting in the appropriate students into the GATE program. That's my belief at least.
So, we could imagine that if we were still using the old test, that number would probably be even higher?
Yes, it would be higher across the board. The percent of students that are in the GATE program, though, since the number of white students and all others would also have been increasing dramatically, I don't know what the percentage would be.
Because it looks like we've only increased about a percentage and a half.
That's one way to look at it, yes. And if we hadn't have instituted the new program-
I was looking at the glass half-full compared to last year.
Well, if we hadn't instituted that program, I, like I said, there was about twenty, thirty students that were let in. This would probably be down to five percent. So, there is, yeah, half-empty, half-full. The problem is, is this number down here, and-
When you've been looking at it for twenty-five years, it starts to look a little half-empty.
Yeah, I understand that, but this number down here is part of the problem that we're facing, is that we're letting in close to a quarter of all the white students into the GATE program. And why are we doing that? It becomes a real messy number because we're letting in one percent, or actually, two percent of the Latino students, but twenty-one percent of the white students. Now, we get into the socially-economically disadvantaged prop, that I showed you earlier. That has a lot to do with why some of the students are having such a hard time, but it doesn't explain this number.
Well, the slide that you showed us earlier showed us the percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students who are Latino.
Yes.
Do we know the percentage of Latino students who are socio-economically disadvantaged?
Yes, we do know that number, and if I was to pull that number up, I believe it's somewhere around sixty percent or something like that. Something, I have that for the secondary district. I don't know if it's in this group of slides. So, it's a combined issue. It's got those, it's got those links to it.
Mrs. Deacon?
On that note, and I actually talked to Dr. Hayden about this a little bit earlier, but, and these are numbers maybe for a different time, but I would like to see the breakout in non-socio-economically disadvantaged Latino students as well, because I think all of us understand that economic status plays a huge role in this, and so it would be nice just to kind of validate that by looking at those numbers. And we talked about the fact that numbers might be too small at individual schools, but if you did a lump comparison, and I understand you did that a couple of years ago, but I think-
I did.
It would be, it would be helpful, I think.
I can redo that study, and in that study, we found that in the elementary district, once we took, losing the word to say here, but we took out the sped students, students with disabilities, and we took out the socially-economically disadvantaged students, and we looked at Latinos and whites that had basically the same demographics, that in the elementary district, the CST scores were pretty close to the same. And when we went to the junior highs, there was a, starting to be a spread, and when we got to the high schools, there was a definite spread, and that was a, and I remember telling you when we asked the principals at the high school what was going on, they were indicating that from their observation, it was that the students were starting to self-select out of the harder courses, and that that was probably a big part of the changing scores, even if you had students who were not socially-economically disadvantaged and not in special education programs.
Yeah, and we hate to see that loss occurring, you know, as it, as it goes along. I had just one other question, and I apologize because as a new board member, I'm sure some of this has been covered, but when you switched to the COGAT test, I noticed from your board brief, there are other tests that are used, assessment tools that are used by other districts, Raven, some of the other ones. Why, why did we go with COGAT, and why did we believe that would best help us identify our Latino GATE students?
Well, the COGAT was being used long before I got here, but when I arrived, I have a pretty long background in intelligent tests, and one of my, the person who was right next to me at Western Washington University, where I was a professor for twenty years, is probably the world expert on IQ testing, and so we had a lot of conversations about just these topics. And it was his opinion, and I support it too, is that of the group-administered abilities test, the COGAT is probably the best, although it is a little more expensive. So, if you were to choose the best quality group-administered abilities test, you'd probably choose the COGAT. There are several others that are a little less expensive that are decent also, and we could, if we wished to, choose to go to them. It shouldn't change very, all it will do is increase the lack, increase the unreliability of the test. More so the COGAT is going to be more reliable in terms of giving you an abilities measure. The other tests will be less reliable. You can pay less money for them, but then you have the reliability issue. So, it's a, you know, it's one of those things, I would still be fine if we switched to one of the other tests, but that's not what we're doing here right now.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, I think we can stay with that cost. I mean, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Okay, so I could give you a much longer answer.
One other comment I have on this, and this is the first time I have seen you break out these percentages by population, and it's really alarming because I had, we have been looking at the disparity between the secondary district and the elementary district, and the enormous number of students that are identified in outside districts that come in, that, so we just have this huge overall number in the secondary district, and maybe you're going to give this the same number for the secondary district, which is going to be really alarming. But for, for the elementary district, I've been going on thinking, well, you know, it's something like seven or eight percent overall, nine percent. I thought that we were more on track, but I had not seen it broken out this way to see such, I mean, you would expect around five percent GATE-identified kids across any population, correct?
You would, the ideal number would be around three percent. Most school districts are between five and seven percent. If you get to ten percent or more, you start to say, whoa, this is really not GATE identification, it's just, you know, strong student identification. And so, when you start to see these numbers of twenty-three percent of a certain population or twenty-one percent, you, you have to pause and say, what's going on here? The numbers, I don't have, I don't know if I have given to you here, but I know that the numbers from two years ago for the secondary district was like forty-nine percent of the GATE population was white. So-
I'm sorry, was it forty-nine percent of the white population was GATE?
Excuse me, forty-nine percent, was it forty-nine percent of the white population was GATE? What was that number? It was, yes, it was very high, and so I'd have to check my numbers, but it was something, so instead of being twenty-one percent, it was like in the forties, which was very alarming when I saw that numbers, and I communicated that to Jan Zettel at the time, and we realized that something had to be done about that. So, do you remember the number, Robin or Brian?
Maybe you can just update us in a board brief with that information.
I will do that.
That would be good.
I think you're right. I think it's a comparison with that bottom line, and I think the number was well up in the forties. It reached almost half the population.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. If you want to keep moving along, thank you.
Okay. It is, it is interesting. Here's just some real quick data. Latino versus white percent proficient on the STAR, and the white population is pretty consistent across second grade through eleventh grade, because that's the only grades the STAR is given in, and this is pretty much how they're doing across the board, and this is, this is the Latino population. They, they actually pretty much mirror each other in many regards, but there is that, what we would call the gap. And this is, this is a zero-to-a-hundred scale, so you get the full range there. Yes.
Can I just ask a question about that? Because I noticed that as well. I mean, obviously, the discrepancy really jumps out at you, but why, why would they necessarily track in tandem like that?
Well, one of the reasons here, of course, is that the STAR becomes increasingly less relevant in the students' opinion, and, and so we will get, we will get that drop as we go through high school. The third grade drop is well-known to be a fact that you go from having the questions read to having to read the questions, and they still don't seem to have corrected that completely in the norming of the test.
Let me suggest, this, I believe this is primarily a function of what is proficient.
What is proficient at each grade level? And when the state set those proficiency standards, they simply looked at the performance of students at that grade level, and they decided through a committee and a bookmarking technique that this should be the level we consider proficient. And there was no, there was no allowance for smoothing that across the grade levels. So, I believe that this somewhat mirrors the state proficiency levels as well.
I'm sure it does.
At some grade levels, it's tougher to hit proficient. At other grade levels, it's easier to hit proficient.
You've got to remember that, as we pointed out earlier, the Latino numbers here have probably a large, that, that drop is because of the socially-economically disadvantaged percentages. Remember eighty, excuse me, ninety percent of the socially-economically disadvantaged were Latino. So, that all factors into this, this big gap that we have here.
One of the things I noticed earlier when you were talking about the elementaries, that it, that are more ethnically balanced elementary schools, Latino students tend to do better, and doesn't that reflect some research that shows that, that when you have a more balanced mix, it kind of rises the tide of all?
It does, and it doesn't, because you've got Cleveland and you've got Community Academy, which are definitely more Latino, especially Cleveland. So, we've got, of the four schools, two are much more dominantly Latino, and the other two are stronger in, in the white side. So, I mean, I don't know whether that bears out or not.
Well, they're still sharply higher than Cleveland and the academy, I would say. So, it's, it's something, it's interesting.
And this is then the math, and I couldn't go any further than seventh and eighth grade, which is actually combined here because you start getting into the subject test and it becomes too difficult to present this. Pretty much the same separation. I think I went through somehow there. Okay. This is attendance. I was asked to take a look at attendance, and there's very quickly, the Latino students seem to have better attendance in elementary school through sixth grade. Now, we get the influx of all the students from the other districts, and we then have a stronger attendance by the white students in high school. I have any idea what that's all about, but it's just an interesting switchover, and it's consistent. So, this is secondary district now. Forty-six point five, but forty-four point eight white, so it's almost fifty-fifty between the two populations in the secondary district. This is the, the secondary district has managed to keep pace with the targets, and I'm, I'm anticipating that they'll continue to do that for Latino students. The math, though, I, I see is seemingly going to fall under for this year. This is, real quick, the junior highs, and this is the real success story in the secondary district, is the junior highs. Look at that growth. And the same for the math and the junior highs, although it seems to have leveled off in '05-'06. The '06-'07 and '07-'08 seem to have gone sideways. The high schools have just gone sideways. Yes, there's up and down, but it's a small population. It's just a casey, so it seems to be going sideways, and the same thing for the math. Here's the API, and once again, not '05-'06, but '06-'07, the APIs for the, for the secondary, this is the junior highs seem to have gone sideways, and this is the API for the senior highs, which has gone sideways. Lots of up and down. A smaller population, you get more variation. You have a question?
I'm sorry, I was looking at Dos Pueblos and Santa Barbara High, and I guess I understand why you would call Dos Pueblos sideways, but I'm not, I mean, it seems to me like it's an improvement, but I see that's not up to where it was in 2003, oh, oh, '03-'04. But Santa Barbara High has surpassed all of its previous marks, so to me that's-
Well, I'd like to see that stay. If Santa, if Santa Barbara High does that, then, then no.
Oh, then, okay, so it comes back down again?
If we get another sideways or up, then I'd say, hey, it looks like they're really doing something there. But, you know, these ups and downs are so large that I just don't know whether or not all of these schools are going to do ups and downs the next year.
Okay, so I, I understand what you're saying. Because there's such a dramatic difference from year to year, it's hard to really say what it's doing.
Exactly.
Okay.
I got to get a few years in a row. It looked like they were doing great here, didn't it? And they dropped. And this is the socially-economically disadvantaged. It was ninety percentiles in the elementary, and it's in the eighty-nineth, eighty-eighth percentiles in the secondary. So, same issue we have here. This is the, the same as the elementary, we have the white students passing the KC at almost a hundred percent, and then the Latinos are starting to rise. This is a, this is actually starting to look like a nice growth. I think some of our KC classes have really paid a, played a role here. And, and if those classes continue, I, I fully expect this to go up. Now, you've got to realize that this is just one year, and since they have three years to take to KC, what we actually see is that by the time you get three years, we're up to about ninety-some, you're going to see that later on, some percent of the students passing to KC and then pa, and graduating from high school. It takes the Latino students longer to get to that point. Dropout numbers, and this is unfortunate, because right here, there was a change in the state coding, and this year was the first year that we were, this, we were last year too, but this is the first year that CSES required that the state coding be up-to-date. And you remember the state data on dropouts went to something like twenty-one percent? I don't, yeah, twenty-one point one percent. And everybody was up in alarm because of that huge jump, and it's like one, you know, almost one quarter of all students in high school dropped out. Fortunately, our numbers were actually quite low, and have continued to be quite low, and these are really quite accurate numbers at this point. And so the, this is probably not a growth, it's probably was here in the beginning, and, and this is just better reporting. Okay. So you can see graduate at the end of their four years, and since we have a low dropout rate, this is actually a fairly good indicator of Latino students who enter in ninth grade and actually manage to graduate. It's probably a little less than this if you were to look at the four-year. But this is eighty-seven, ninety-two, and ninety-two percent graduate. I think the three high schools can be, I haven't, I don't have the continuation school here, but I think the three traditional high schools should be congratulated on these gradu, graduation rates, because they're really quite good. This is the gate numbers, and I went back and, because I had the problem with the other one, I went back and, and checked it. Now, the numbers here are slightly different, but the difference now at this point, though, the numbers you had were correct. This is because I'm pulling these from Ares, and there's been, since I took those first numbers to now, there's been changes in the population. And that's the only real difference between these numbers and what you have on your, on your handout. They're slightly different. But the percentage, I think, was fifteen point one or something like that, now it's fifteen point three. So I made sure those numbers are right. This is the academies, and we are now tagging the academies. This is something that I insisted on, because we weren't doing this, and it was impossible to know what student was in what academy. So we start tagging them, and it actually turned out that my insistence was perfect timing, because CSES reporting required us to do it too. So we now have a pretty good account, and we're pretty much staying at around twenty percent of the students in these academies are Latino students. And with fifty percent of the, fifty-fifty split between Latino and whites, you would expect this to be forty or fifty percent here, but it's not.
Well, I also think there's dramatic variations between the academies, and that some have, are, are quite a bit higher, and so it's, it's actually pulling your number up to, to twenty percent, when in fact, there are some where it's probably, you know, five percent.
Well, if we look at MAD and VADA, you know, in the Board Focus Schools, I have that all broken out, and yes, they are lower, maybe fifteen percent or something like that, but even the health program at San Marcos only, I believe, goes up to forty or so percent, but it's a small group. So none of the academies, to my knowledge, and I, maybe I have to take that back and I look at the numbers, I don't think any of them represent the population. But if anyone did, it would probably be the health program at San Marcos.
Okay.
And we're just about in, let's see. This is AP, and there's almost no change. DP went from nine percent to twelve percent of the students taking AP course. These are very low numbers for both San Marcos and Santa Barbara, when you consider that they are actually quite a bit more than fifty percent Latino. Dos Pueblos is about, what's it, thirty, forty percent? Forty percent Latino, I believe it is, and so their numbers are low too. I was asked to do grade point average, and I, I think the grade point average reflects the same thing as all of them, that there is a gap, and it's probably mainly attributed it to the SED, social-economically disadvantaged status. But some of it's due to other reasons too, I'm sure. That's the Latino report. Any questions?
Board members, any other comments or questions? Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I'd just like to thank you, and it is, it's helpful, and it's certainly food for thought, you know, as we move forward on developing policies, and, and trying to find ways that we can increase participation in, in these different programs and close that gap.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just want to say I appreciate this too. This is always a helpful, though sometimes depressing bit of information to get. I was just wondering if we could, I don't think we have the data on the GPAs in our packet.
No, we, we don't.
I can put that in a board brief.
Yeah, a copy of that one as well.
I'll put the updated gate numbers and the attendance in a board brief, and I'll see if I can reverse the SED to see what percentage of them are Latinos. So I'll try and do those four in a board, board brief for you.
Great, thank you. I have a question for Ms. Waskey, and I'm, I'm not sure this is accurate, although I was, I happened to be at Santa Barbara High School last week, and I was, was in the, the counseling office when a parent came in to talk about her student who was coming in from junior high and was going to be enrolling as a freshman next year. And one of the questions she had, and I didn't think about it having this impact, but I'm wondering if, as we look at the data for the, for the academies, she was talking to the, the office personnel about her student wanting to be in Avid and also wanting to be in an academy. And she was being told, and that the student would have to make a choice between the two, that the student could probably be in Avid for ninth grade, when they're pre, preparing for an academy, but then would have to choose between Avid and the academy after ninth grade.
I think Dr. White, looks like she has some very current information on this.
Actually, you know, tenth grade is very difficult for an Avid student, because it's the first year that they take social science, and so they have so many courses that they have to take, that it's very difficult for students to stay in Avid unless it's a zero-period class anyways. So oftentimes, students are in seventh grade, eighth grade Avid, ninth grade Avid, they leave Avid or have some sort of Avid-type club where they meet, and then go back to Avid when they're in eleventh grade. So Avid is not as developed at Santa Barbara High as it is at the other two high schools, and I know that next year, Dr. Caprito will have Joseph Velasco, who is the Avid coordinator at Santa Barbara High School on a release period, to work out some of those things that aren't exactly working as smoothly as they could. And so that is actually something that Santa Barbara High is working on. So that may be true, and not true because of the academy, it may be more true in terms of this tenth grade question, because of the coursework that they have to take.
The, the concern that I would have, or the question that I would raise is, given that a lot of the Latino students are geared into Avid in, in junior high, then that could be having an effect on the numbers of students in our, number of Latino students in our academies, if they are being, having to make a choice, or, or being told that they have to make a choice between me remaining in Avid, which, in this case, the parent was very adamant that the student was doing very well in, in the Avid program. And then having to choose between that and going into an academy, I can, that might be steering some of our Latino students away from the academies.
You know... Thank you for that question, because we, we're going to meet this August as a district to talk about some of the things that, in terms of Avid implementation, that we need to focus on, and clearly, that's something that we do need to focus on. This summer, in the week of June eighth through twelfth, we're going to have some professional development, and one of the professional development sessions that we're having is training for counselors on Avid. So we are aware that sometimes it looks like you have to make choices, but we want to make sure that those choices are choices that are, are in the best interest of students and meet all of their needs, whether they're intending to enter into one of our career technical education pathways, or one of our academies, if you will, because not all of the academies are actually California academies. The Health Academy, for example, just carries that name, and so does the Engineering Academy. It's really only VADA and MAD that are the California academies, where the students very much have to stay in courses together.
You know, we can provide like a board brief in June, because this is right after graduation and all, and we're going to be meeting for this week, like Dr. White says. And so we can, we can maybe address this question, as well as other kind of updates on Avid following that week. I'm sure we'll have some kind of report on the PD week in general as well.
This just raises the issue for me, because I think I've heard about this in conjunction with the Engineering Academy also, you can't, there's no time in the day to both do Avid and the Engineering Academy. And it would just be so nice if there were a funding source you could use to have an after-school Avid program, so that students, I mean, and that, that it's then also communicated to parents, that there are, that there are, that there are other avenues, or other ways to work around issues like that.
Thank you for that suggestion, that's something we'll also address. We have, the after-school issue is something that is a little bit sticky with Avid itself. They want us to have the Avid elected within the school day. And so when we look at our certification criteria with Avid National, having the course after school is an issue with them. And so we're working with them as well on helping us define really what our academic day is, so that we can offer before-school and after-school Avid.
Gotcha. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I have one more thing that I wanted to say, and that is, that yes, we see this every year, and I just really would like to see numbers change. And I think, I mean, obviously, for Mrs. Cordero, you've been in this community, I think, the longest of all of us, since you were native, but it's...
Not just because of my age, you mean?
Yeah. No, because you were born and raised in Santa Barbara. But it's just, it's just not acceptable. It's not acceptable, and it's not any place I want to be. And so I would really like to see some of these trends. And the other question I have, I guess, is are these, is this particular data shared? Do you sit down with the principals and say, look, at this at a principal's meeting?
Well, we can, I, I think the principals are pretty much aware of this already, but we, we do go over it with them. I don't, they're not here right now, I mean, I'm not doing a formal presentation like this to them.
I mean, I know that they know it in terms of their own schools, but to see the, the big picture, and to know where our focus goals are in relation to that, and say, look, you know, these trends need to change. Okay.
And I'll just add one thing, I know that the, the gate program came up, and, and there were some philosophical issues that started to be discussed as a part of the budgeting process, and I think we realized that was not the time to do it, but I'm certainly open to, to looking at that program and, and finding ways, you know, to affect the kind of change that we're looking towards, so I'd like to make that a priority.
Good. All right, thank you. And we will now move on to...
Nope, nope.
Oh, sorry, we have, we'll now move on to our public comment, two minutes.
There is no self-scrutiny of the district's role in the achievement gap, and your role in maintaining the status quo is significant, and it's no secret to us, only to you. You blame socioeconomic factors, you shame parents, and you destroy futures. You are lost, and so are our families if we don't expose the problems a moribund school system, and then simply reform education by creating child-centered, teacher-directed, and parent-involved schools. The dropout rate doesn't take into consideration the hundreds of Santa Barbara students pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline, jail-tracked, devastated, destroyed, dead. Remember Mark Caprito was offended by a memo regarding the push-out of students and the improvement of the test scores? We all know the truth, and it falls on me to speak the truth to power. I know you don't like me, and you don't want to listen to me. Sorry. This is my destiny. Ask Dr. Hayden how the Casey-wavered students factor into the data. You look at lines and think you're doing your job. You are deluded...
Thirty seconds.
...and derelict in your duty. Please visit School Talk, SB School Talk. There are hundreds of books, policy papers, articles, and videos, and specifically reports on the achievement gap. May sixteenth is the Washington DC rally in celebration of the 55th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. Separate but equal is segregation. Davis Hayden said, "We're hoping these programs are going to work, but they're not working so far, they're flat." That's the definition of neurotic. Doing the same thing, expecting different results.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay, we are up to item E5, which is the update on the swine flu. However, we don't have our resource person here.
Well...
So I'm not sure.
Barbara and I have worked closely on this, I do have a handout. This is a compilation of what we've been doing, working on the H1N1 influenza virus, otherwise called the swine flu. Let me just give you a couple of quick updates. At this point, all, all bets are off as to how this might be handled. We've alerted our people that on moments' notice, we might have to close some activity. It might be graduation, it might be, might be prom, it might be school the next day, or we might isolate a student, we might isolate a classroom, we might have, in fact, the, the county was very clear about this on Monday morning, which was just yesterday, seems like a long time ago now, that we might have students stay home, have staff be at the school. The Grizzly Charter School in the San Luis Obispo area actually has students still attending school by, by decision of, of County Health, who do have the virus. You know, there are four strains of the virus, three of them are, I understand, much, much milder, and testing is still a problem, so that the county does know who has what influenza virus and what to do. But we're working closely with the county, we're maintaining regular contact with them, and we simply wanted to be prepared for any, any sort of action, so that if an emergency were, were to occur, then we'd be ready to move very quickly. So they're really all options open, all alternatives open, and we've worked directly with our people in meetings to notify them that they need to be ready to move quickly. This is exactly the kind of thing that people in education are very good at. Our administrators, site administrators, our teachers, the rest of the site staff, are used to rearranging an entire day based upon one event, or based upon something happening, and reshuffling two thousand two hundred students on moments' notice. So they have that flexibility. So I simply wanted to alert you that we're staying in constant contact, we're updating parents regularly, in English and in Spanish, and we're ready to move ahead. And with that, I really do need to go to the Emergency Operations Center. Let me just step to the aside here, because it is an emergency, I'm sure this would be allowed. We're, we're opening up our junior high to airdrops again, we're considering whether we do need to close a number of elementary schools. Hang on, I'll be right with you. Elementary schools, including even Franklin, Cleveland, Roosevelt, so they're concerned about the possibility of the fire spreading in that direction. Those decisions have not been made, but we expect to make them fairly soon. So we won't be waiting until tomorrow morning, first thing, to inform people. And we're ready to go with our tele-parent...
Excellent.
...so that we can let parents know immediately, and of course, we have all the... And of course, we have all the support we need for telecommunications with our staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right, board members. We have just a couple more things to do on our agenda that I hope that we can get through. One is, the next one up is E6, update on the Santa Barbara School District's Youth Violence Prevention and Intervention Steering Committee. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure what else I can add beyond what's listed as the cover memo, and the for you is copies of the minutes of the past four meetings that have been held. You have a copy of the calendar of meetings. You also have a copy of the membership on the committee. We also shared with you what the initial focus was for the committee. It indicates that we were setting up the strategies that we would use, the recruitment process. Once we hired the outreach worker, we began to focus on his training needs, and right now, we're at the point of monitoring the work. And the latest, as you'll see in the minutes that we'll present to you, the latest development is that we're moving into a subcommittee, primarily composed of elementary staff that's not representative of the committee, to work in the area of the development of a prevention curriculum. All right? Any questions you might have?
Questions? I mean, two of us have been going to committee meetings, so I feel like we know, we know what's been going on.
Well, I now read the minutes, so I felt like I was there, too. So, actually, I don't have any questions.
Just in interest for the public, the board did request two members of, to sit on this committee, and as President Parker's indicated, Kate Parker, as well as Net Cordero, are members of that committee.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
I have really thought that the meeting's been quite productive, so, do we have public comment on this?
We have two public comments. We have Kate Smith, followed by Lain Leeler.
All right. Mrs. Smith, two minutes.
I've declared that the South Coast Gang Task Force Leadership Council is engaged in treason, betraying our children in the public trust. That's the name of a book written by Armand Fusco of YankeeInstitute.com, dot org. The director of that institute, Louis Andrews. Okay, let me see, you're talking, so-
What we want to be sure that you're talking about is the Youth Violence Prevention and Intervention Committee.
Yes, okay. There are a lot of meetings going on with the Youth Task Force and Prevention Committee. I asked the Gang Task Force Leadership Council if I could have a seat at the table-
This is not the correct committee, Mrs. Smith.
...and was not accepted. I'd like to be on the Youth Violence Prevention and Intervention Committee. I wasn't accepted at the other committee. I'd like to be on the Youth Violence Prevention and Intervention Committee. I'm a credentialed high school teacher. I'm a grant writer. I'm an experienced and actually-recognized community organizer. I'm a trained meeting facilitator. I'm a wealth of resources, and I don't have the time to tell you my resume. Of course, if you rest on your laurels, you're wearing them in the wrong place. I would like to remind you-
Thirty seconds.
-that Brian Sarvas gave you a seminal document called "Breaking the Transmission of Violence", and that report, which is being used in Iraq to stop the suicide bombers, is diametrically opposed to an outreach worker, which, by the way, in the summer months and on vacation, there is no school, so we have educational monies-
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
-going to pay law enforcement.
Mr. Wheeler.
Discussion of assignment and training needs of outreach worker, that's pretty disgusting.
Thanks, Lain Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. As you balance the needs of the community and our students, and look at these different committees, one of the suggestions that the association would like to remind you of is that when you look at the number of resources we have, this is a single resource. And while it's, we are assessing right now to determine its value, I would encourage you to remember that, right now, we have a number of counselors that are on the cutting block that have documented very, I think succinctly, the value that they have in terms of keeping kids in school, and making sure they have the classes that they need for graduation, graduating around time. And it certainly is going to be a balanced approach, but that is another, I think, very important piece that I'm not sure they brought out in their presentation, but I think it's something to be considered as we balance our resources and apply them to the needs of the students in this regard. So, just do keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
All right. Any further comments? We will then move on to item, where are we? Item G, back to the consent agenda. There were six, no, one, two, seven policies, ARs, exhibits pulled. The first one up was AR, sorry, Exhibit 5132, which I believe was on page 11, and that was-
President Parker, I'm sorry, could we just look at the notes at the very beginning? Because there's a note on AR 5145.9, and I'm sorry, I didn't notice that, but if we're going to go consecutively, hate-motivated behavior. It's, there's not a page, it's, it's pre-page one. It's like page zero.
Oh, and the notes?
Should that not say internet? It says intranet. And if these are just notes-
No.
No?
No, it should be intranet. It's for, it's for the staff at the sites, to be able to-
Okay.
-pull this down at the sites.
Okay, okay. I wasn't familiar-
Yeah. Yeah. So, the first one is Exhibit 5132, dress code policy. Mrs. Deacon.
When we changed it to footwear, I think it should now read, "Safe footwear is required."
All right. Thank you for catching that.
Shoes are footwear is.
Mm-hmm. Anything else on that policy, or on that exhibit, I should say? All right. Let's just take a look at the whole package, and then make, make a motion at that time on these outstanding policies. So, we will now move to 5141.21, the AR. That's on page 19.
Actually, it's, it's page 21.
Page 21.
At the top there, where we substituted authorized, I think it just, it needs to say authorized healthcare provider.
Okay. Yes, we see that. So, add in authorized healthcare provider where it's missing. Anything else on that one? All right, moving on to 5141.23, and that is on page 27, asthma management.
I think it's on 29.
You're right, sorry. 29.
Actually, it's on page 30, and it's under professional development. And the last line, the last sentence should read, "The professional development shall be provided by a school nurse, community agency, or other qualified health professional or educator."
All right.
And Barbara Keaney already has this correction.
Okay, so that will go in. Any other comments on that one? Then we will move up to the AR 5141.31. And that, I believe, is, Mrs. Deacon?
On page 47, where we changed the wording here under immunizations below kindergarten level, would it be okay to say at the very end of that line, the one that's underlined, "Or the parent can choose to waive immunizations"? I'm not sure waiver is really the verb.
I think that we need to choose to request a waiver.
Okay.
Okay. Choose to request a waiver?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Maybe I'll come to learn that waiver is a verb, but from you right now, it's still not.
Not with that spelling. Okay, then we're up to the D2 section, the 6,000 series, and the first one pulled there is AR 6151.
I'm sorry, didn't somebody pull 51, or maybe we already looked at it, I'm sorry, 41.23, did we already look at that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
So, let's see, 6151, was that you, Mrs. Deacon?
It is.
What page number is that?
Oh, I'm on page 129, actually.
Thank you. Page 129. And this is, hold on.
Class size.
This is class size, okay.
My, my only question was on the elementary policy 6151, and page 128, there's a note at the end that talks about the flexibility now with the budget cuts, but I didn't see something like that here on page 129, and we talk about number, item three at the very bottom. It says, "There shall be no more than 20 students per certificated teacher." Do we need a qualification like the one we have for elementary as well?
You know, actually, I think what happened is, I was questioning myself, because I thought, I thought we did that. We put it in the board policy. It's on page 128, beginning in fiscal year 2009, 2010. We, covers both K3 and 912, because the class size reductions, you know, all those programs are under this flexibility authorization. But we did not include it in the AR, and that's probably a good addition.
Okay, okay.
So, we can use that exact phrase that you see on page 128.
Okay. Next up was AR 6155, and this is one that I had pulled. I just questioned the last paragraph. This is on challenging courses by examination. The student must earn a score of proficient or advanced proficient to receive credit for challenging a course by examination. The transcript shall reflect that the grade B for proficient, or A for advanced proficient. Grades in challenged courses shall replace previous course grades. And I guess I was surprised at that, because I would have thought if you were challenging a course, that you would either get a pass or no pass, and so, I'm, I'm just questioning why you get a grade at all.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, page 140 in the 6,000 series.
Oh, okay, I was way too, okay. I was trying to listen and find.
Yeah. So, it's the last paragraph on that.
Okay.
And Dr. Hayden apparently doesn't have an answer for me on this.
Wow.
But, but why, why would you get a grade? Why would you just get pass, not pass? Because they haven't taken anything that remotely would seem to, it shouldn't weigh in their GPA, is what my concern is with this. So, my, my suggestion would be, "The student must earn a score of proficient or advanced proficient to receive credit for challenging a course by examination. The transcript shall reflect a pass for proficient, or advanced proficient, or, or not pass." And then just get rid of the line, "Grades in challenged courses shall replace previous course grades." Does that make any sense? It was very public-
Makes sense to me. I think we missed this.
Okay.
Unless, Dr. Hayden-
Well, I'm, I'm not too sure. There may have been a reason for that, so maybe, I hate to tell you this, but maybe you should-
Okay, so maybe we should pull AR 6155 for review.
And find out if there's a reason from one of the high schools as to why that's put that way.
So, we are, we are pulling that on challenged courses. Now, we're going to go to AR 6172, on page 267. This is in the gifted and talented program.
Oh, boy.
And at the bottom of page 267, there's a paragraph, or just a sentence, that says, "The superintendent or designee shall identify as gifted and talented any student who has transferred from a district in which he, she was identified as a gifted and talented student." And we had quite some discussion around this last year, and I thought that the outcome was that that should be taken into consideration. Ed Code requires that it be taken into consideration, but that they not, they don't necessarily have to be identified. Is that, where are we on that?
That's true.
That is true, exactly. That's after studying that at length.
So, I guess it would be up to the board to modify that to say "may" instead of "shall"?
Um, "may," yes. Or, Mrs. Cordero, do you have any better language on it?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I was going to comment on something else in this one.
Okay, so, for that particular sentence, we will change "may identify" instead of "shall identify." And Mrs. Cordero, what else?
This was one where I just had sort of a philosophical question about the language. I understand what we mean by gifted and talented, and we give it a definition at the very beginning. But, I was wondering if there was a way to maybe word it? Because, for example, in, in that sentence that you were reading, but it actually appears in many other places, too, where it says, "The superintendent or designee may identify as gifted and talented any student who has..." We, I was wondering if there's some way that we can word that, so it says, "May identify as qualifying for the gifted, talented program." Because, in truth, we assume that, that all of our students have their gifts, and all of our students have their talents, and all of our students are gifted and talented. And so, what we mean when we say they'll be designated, is we mean they'll be designated as part of, as being, as qualifying for this program. And so, I'm wondering if there's some way to have the language reflect that. I know it's kind of a minor point of semantics, maybe, but I, I kind of object to this notion that only these students are gifted and talented.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at, we may need to look at this further, your, your exact question. I am looking at that definition and notice that Ed Code follows it, and oftentimes, we're very restricted. I mean, in, in defining a program, it's, it's that definition, but I understand what you're saying. It's more around the identification.
Yeah, I'm not objecting to the definition.
Right.
I'm just saying, in the areas where we're just referring to it, if we could make, make it clear that we're referring to students who qualify as-
Could we pull this, and then have you work on some language for it, to bring that back? Okay, so let's do that. We will pull AR 61-
Can I make just one comment?
Yes.
You're going to have, and that, when you're going to do that, you have to be careful, because in the secondary district especially, they qualify for either math, or for English, and stuff like that, so you, qualifying may have to be a much more complicated answer to that.
I will take that into account.
All right. So, with that, we are pulling AR 6155 and AR 6172. Is there a motion to approve the remaining ARs and exhibits?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. And we have come to the end of our agenda, with no objection from the board. This meeting is adjourned.